Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Bryanbeck zoning board of appeals meeting for April 17th, 2024. I see that we have all five members, so we have a quorum. And the first order of business is a review and hopefully approval of the zoning board appeals minutes for the last meeting, which was March 20th, 2024. I went through, I didn't see anything, but I'll ask my board members, any corrections, concerns? Okay. So I'll make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, we have two new applications, kinda. The first application is the need application. Come on up and introduce yourself and Kim will take you through everything up on the board up there, and you will have something else you want to show, but if you could just let the, all of us know who are familiar with the application to some group, but just let us know what your change is going to be, and speak into the microphone, please, and you're on TV, so.
I'm on TV, so let me present myself properly.
Yeah, get your good side.
Yeah, let me, this is my good side, Mike Pottery, land surveyor, second generation land surveyor, 50 years of private practice, Pottery Land Surveyor, P L L C. I am on the Board of Directors for the Mid Hudson Valley Land Survey Association. I am on the New York State Association of Professional Land Surveyors Legislative Committee, and recently appointed to, appointed to the Strategic Planning Committee for the State Association of Professional Land Surveyors. I am back tonight representing Jody Neede with a project that has been ongoing for a little bit of time now regarding a variance for an in-ground pool. We've had multiple meetings regarding this particular proposal. Tonight, we've come through with a more aesthetically pleasing proposal. We have chosen to move the pool to behind the house rather than alongside of the house. There was quite a few comments with regards to the original location, although we had kind of come to an agreement that it was going to be aesthetically pleasing where we had originally placed it. Now we have moved it to a much more private area in the rear of the home. We have also eliminated the need for a cool shed. So we have come back with a much more simplified plan, and I know these measurements were just asked of me tonight. So the questions that were actually have arisen are what are the, you know, what are the actual variances being required? So at this point, we go from what was originally, I mean, we were, you know, 46 and 43 feet with the corner of the pool encroaching into the zoning offset. We are now at only 7.5 and 5.9 feet with moving the pool behind the house. So we are here tonight asking for an encroachment into the 100-foot zoning offset from the road for an encroachment into our current zoning setback with respect to the northeast corner of the pool needing 7.5 feet and the southeast corner of the pool needing 5.9 feet. You know, otherwise, everything else that we have proposed here is now, you know, falls within, within the law, which we are allowed to do, fencing, planting, and so on. There's really, we have really, in no other term to put it, we have dumbed this down quite a bit for everyone. We are asking for two small variances for the corners of the pool. Otherwise, everything else is, you know, out of the picture now. Again, we have now put this pool into a place where it is actually hard to see for any passing vehicles or any neighboring properties. Keep in mind, Jody has over three acres here. We are putting it behind the, behind the house. The topography tends to dip down behind the house, much more aesthetically pleasing place. And not to reiterate my original presentation for the last few months, but please keep in mind that Jody's house is one of the first houses in the Winston Drive Stone Church subdivision, which the zoning offsets back then, close to 40 years ago, were much more pleasing to the conditions of the land versus today's 100-foot front yard setback, which you will notice on this plan here, and I'll just step over here, that this is the actual zoning setback for Jody's front yard setback. This purple rectangle is the home. That being said, everything she has there encroaches into the current zoning setbacks. So that is the situation we have.
So deep down, please.
And we've, we've found ourselves to this point where we are now asking for very menial variances for two corners of the pool, and otherwise, we've brought this to probably the most aesthetically pleasing plan that we have presented to you so far.
Yeah, I agree that the placement is much better than the original plan. I also want to commend you guys for renderings. This is what we wanted and needed the entire time, they're excellent, and I really appreciate the effort put in to put in the renderings. Yeah, Kim, why don't you show them? These are the kind of things that we do need to show how the pool is going to look on the property. Now, the only glitch, and I talked to Kim about this, and I think she talked to you before the meeting, is that we have to get exact measurements so that we can get a letter from Brian and all that. So if you can do that with a timely fashion, we can accept it subject to that and then have enough.
I'm going to get that for you, I'm going to get that for you right away, but let me just give you a really quick explanation of how that works. So what I have done here is I have created a variance footage chart for required variance footage. So you will see on the right-hand side of the map, I am asking for a northeast corner of proposed pool to have a 7.5-foot encroachment into the variance setback line. I'm asking for 5.9 feet on the southeast corner. So technically, we're just taking 100 foot minus 7.5 and 100 foot minus 5.9 to create those exact distances. So technically, they are, they are spoken for on this mapping as prepared, but the arrows that I have shown on this previous plan, that's literally no problem whatsoever. I'm going to leave here and I'm going to do it for you now. I'm going to get yourself into the next 24 hours.
Yeah, and again, it's just important things that Brian gets him so he can write you the letter and then we can get the documentation up for the public hearing.
Absolutely, and then we'll see you next month.
You will see us next month. Questions, concerns? You can have it staked out again, we'll come out if you're sure.
Whatever you guys want, we're going to get.
Well, if you just want to come out, because we're the new area, because we're after the old.
Whatever Jody, whatever she would like and you guys would like, we're going to make it work.
Just stick it up like it did before, so we have an idea. Because I know it's moved, which is great. And it's a much better spot.
Yeah, when we were out there, we didn't even see the other side of the house. And I kept on thinking, I mean, I wanted to go over to see what was over there, because I, I thought this, somehow I didn't think originally it was the right spot for the pool. So for me, imagine kind of figured it out.
I'm going to tell you, nearly a year of thinking and planning can change things immensely. And I think we finally have achieved the right location and dimensions and patio. And again, in terms of aesthetically pleasing to the neighboring homes and such, this is so, there's, you're not going to see the pool, so that's the moral of the story now. And besides, the planning board's biggest issue was the shed and its location. We have now nixed the shed. It will not be there. The pool is moved, so I mean, I can't imagine any other complaint there could be.
You can't speak for the planning board, but.
So I heard.
It's much easier with where this is and, and I like it.
Yes.
The presentation was better and everything else.
Yeah. Couple of measurements to Mike.
Yep, we're going to get everything you need.
Tighten it up, so. Questions, concerns? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the application subject to receiving those two measurements, so Brian can write his letter and he can notice it properly, and that has to be done, I think. I forget what the deadline is, but you're going to do it this week.
I'm going to get it for you in the next 24 hours.
So second that motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So you're going to be on for May 15th, I assume you can be here. In the interim, we'll probably come over and just check and see where the, stake out the new area.
Why don't we get, pick a date for a stakeout review? Last time that was on a Saturday.
Saturday's good.
Try and organize something along those lines. When would you like to review it by, so I can make sure I have it on my agenda?
How about the Saturday, 4th, 15th, whatever that is.
4th.
It's 4th, he just has a question. 11th. 11th, oh.
So we're going to go by the 11th?
11th, good.
I'm going to let you guys.
Okay, we'll confer with you.
All right, yeah, let me know, just so I can get it on the agenda.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And just in terms of staking, is it just the pool that you want staked out?
Yeah, I think that's, well, and then the, was the fencing issue as well?
The fencing meets all the zoning criteria, the patio meets the zoning criteria. The only item we don't have meeting zoning criteria is the pool. And again, it's.
That's fine.
It's the 7.5 and the 5.9.
Yeah, I think all we need is that.
Was the fence staked out the last?
Yes.
So the fence isn't changing at all?
No, exactly. So that's there, yeah, that's there, and the stakes are still there, right, Jim?
Yeah. And then my other, my final question, and sorry if I'm being repetitive, but it's going to be, you know, we got the variance specific measurement, I do the public hearing again, we're looking at next meeting being a potential resolution as well?
We is. Yep.
Okay, great.
Yep, we promised that to you, I think, the last time around. And we don't do it often, sometimes we think it's the right thing to do, so we'll have a resolution for that.
I understand.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody. It was a pleasure. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, we need to go through the secret stuff and all that.
Well, yeah, so this isn't really a new, it's a new application because it's been adjusted, but secret's still going to be the same.
Yeah.
If, I would recommend that we just let the planning board see the new design. I think the planning board will probably agree to it, if they do need the maintenance control of the shed, but the planning board wouldn't mind just taking it quickly, giving us another updated version.
Do you want to give them a overview of the actual thing?
Well, yeah, like I said, it's not really a new application, but I would like to let them see the updated version.
Their major concern was the fence?
The shed.
The shed, right, right.
Because they thought the shed would, the shed's roof line would be a little over the fence, but, yeah, but, and I think that the planning board's other comments was that it could be, if there was another location on the property, and this will reduce the variance, so I think, I think it will be a favorable response.
This, that's where it should have been on the walls, so. All right, the next new application is Timothy Nelson and Sandra, is it Phil Keating? I got it right? So somebody has to come up here to present the application. Come on up. Okay, and if you can just state your name, and really just take us through what you want to do.
Sure, absolutely. My name is Kurt Sullivan, I'm an architect high post in York, also the architectural consultant for the town of Uplands, and R E C C member for the town of Rochester. So grew up in the area, like, all that. So right now, I'm working with Sandra and Tim. They have a house at 9 Lower Hook Road. They're in the RA 10 district. I assume that their lot was, is by a pre-existing non-conforming lot. It's 1.29 acres. The setbacks in this district are 150 front yard, 100 side yard, 75 rear yard. So with a lot this size, almost seems that you're going to have an area variance. So the house is approximately 25 hundred square feet, and we are proposing a 420-square-foot addition on the east side of the building right here. It's for, it's an art room, we call it an art room. It's called, it's called an art room, right here. So you can see, it's kind of a balanced addition of the house. The way the roof lines work, this addition here is a gable addition that, you know, with a ridge going in this direction, intersects the existing ridge going in that direction. So it's similar to the way this addition, the existing addition on this side intersects in, and the way the garage connects into this way. So it kind of completes a little bit of a symmetry. I know that's not technically what we're vowing for, we're here for an area variance, but there is a real logic to the addition being on this side, just in the way it can connect to the building internally and also externally, the way the form, you know, connects to the building, creates a balanced shape. It, you know, is still pretty much in the center of the lot. The building itself is a little bit shifted to the east to begin with, so, but this is the entrance side of the building right here. This is the front of the building, so we wouldn't propose to go any closer. This is the garage in the back. Very difficult to try to get an addition off on either one of these sides, A, because it's blocking windows, and B, the roof forms are almost, very difficult to add on to, but, you know.
You can have a rendering which might show up.
Yeah, you can click over that whenever you're ready. So this is the front of the building right here, so this is facing Lower Hook Road. This is the existing garage in the back. The entrance is on, over here on this far side. So this is the proposed addition right here, which is this room right here. So which is 20, 20, 20 feet by 21 feet. So that's the proposed addition. This is looking at the addition here from the, sort of, from the rear of the building. This is the garage right here. This is the existing house right here, and this is the proposed addition coming out this way. So this is an art production room, so there's like an upper gable here for light, and this faces the backyard, this window here. This is the front building, so the window in the front is a little bit less. But again, plan view, so this is the existing house, the proposed addition is right here. You can see the proposed internal connection right through here, doesn't interfere with any of the bedrooms or layout, the interior and the space makes this room a little bit smaller, so we can get to this room in a logical way. Elevations, so I think the 3D drawing is probably easier to read, but this is the front of the building here, this is the addition coming off on the side. This is the east elevation, so this is the garage in the back. This is the existing building up here high. This is the front face of the building over here, and this is the addition coming off to us towards the east. This is the back of the building over here, this is the garage, this is one of the existing rear bedrooms, and this is the new, the new addition, proposed addition up here. Opposite that is the other side of the house where the entryway is.
And then this is just a parcel access to the.
Yeah, yeah, so here we are, here we are right here. You can see that there's a driveway that loops all the way through. We, our proposed addition would still be within the loop of that driveway. So I think that, I think that, yeah, so we're asking for 44-foot, six, you know, variance.
Yeah, the side yard setback is, from 100, the variance requested is 44.6, and then on the front yard setback, it's 100, and then.
150 on front yard.
150?
Yeah.
Likewise, the math doesn't add up, it's a proposed 74 and then variance 26.
That was, I think, the determination letter?
I'll verify that.
Yeah, that does, at least the math I can work with, it doesn't quite, it's a long time.
There is new math out there.
Yeah, well, the math from the 60s and 70s was pretty good, isn't it? Anyway, all right, now, on the renderings, I appreciate the renderings, is, one thing we typically like, and this is really good, thank you, is if you can show the structure on the property, so to speak, like, you saw the.
Are you aerial view?
Aerial, or, just so we can see how it's going to look on the property, obviously it's an estimate, but show how it's going to look on the property itself.
Like 3D.
Yeah, kind of thing.
Look at 3D aerial view.
Aerial, side.
Did you include photographs of the house from the road from the front?
How it sits on the property as a whole. The property has north, south, east, west, so it's, where, where is it, how much room around, yeah, basically, I think, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, and, and we're, we're going to come out there, obviously, and take a look. I assume it's been staked, the, or will be.
It will be, okay.
But, I mean, the application is nicely done and complete, except, in my mind, I'll defer my board members, except for that.
It's a 3D model, so I can, I can basically outline the property, you know, come up and, I can put some trees in and sort of give you a feeling for how much is yard and how much, you know, how this house sits in the yard and with the road, so I can do that.
Okay.
Does it sound, does it sound a little bit of the Albinist side? I love that house.
Oh, it is, that's the house? I love that house.
I'm the guy that actually asked about your house at the time, when I was already kind of like.
Oh, my God! I remember you! So you're in a helmet and a bike.
It's, it's a great house.
Oh, thank you!
Brilliant. My question is that it's, it doesn't really matter what it is, I'm just curious, it's an art room, is it for hanging art or creative art?
No, creative.
Ah, so it's your studio.
Yeah.
It's a great house.
I have a question, and maybe conceptual, but if you know the house, do you have to come out?
Yes, we do, because we have to see the addition. And how it's staked out and how it goes, you know, we need to see the property.
Thank you.
A lot of times it makes, it makes sense, because topography governs where things are, have a big place sometimes.
It's amazing, isn't it?
The site is very.
And everybody says it's amazing, and I haven't been out there, so.
Kurt, did you design this?
I did not. I think this was, was it 2006 or something like that?
2016 or 17, I think she applied.
Yeah, there was an original building, this, this wasn't, this, this part right here was an original building, and then, and then in 2016, I guess, right? They completely redid the whole thing. If you get on Google Maps, and I Google the direction here once, just kind of 3D view, it's the original building still in Google.
I just did it, that's why I asked the question.
I can't do the property.
I just got one question, where is the second field? Is that, I see you got the well on.
Yeah, I do have it marked here, it's an exclamation, because it's an exist, it's an existing field, so it's actually right out in the, right here.
It had been moved, yeah.
Utilities are run across the front of the property, there's an underground service right here. The well is back here, so everything is well laid out in the site, you know, for an existing lot that's that small.
Any other questions, concerns? All right, and I'd make a motion that we accept the application subject to receiving the additional rendering. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, can you be here on May 15th?
Yeah.
All right, on May 15th, we'll have the public hearing, and what will happen is the neighbors will be noticed, people have an opportunity to come out here if they want, and ask questions about the project, you know, if any questions, concerns, whatever, voice their opinion. So basically the same kind of thing, just with maybe some participants.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Okay, we'll see you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a little bit of a speaking there. The recommendation is that this project be in a type-two action under 617.5C16, granting individual setback and allowing variances and adjustments, and that makes sense. So do I have a motion? I'll, I'll make a motion that we set this application as a type-two under 617.5C16. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a referral to Town of Bryanbeck, obviously, and then the W A say?
Yep. To the other one.
Okay.
For the phone contact person?
That's what I'm about to, that's what I'm hoping to, so, I mean.
Well, the only challenge is I'm not the reading company, that's to the.
That's fine, you're allowed, you're a volunteer. All right, I'll do it. All right, so that brings us to the public hearings, and the. Okay, Katoya?
Yes, perfect.
Phonetics. Come on up, and is there anybody here for this application, Katoya? Okay, well, come on up anyway, we have to go through the formalities. And basically, it's the same thing, you're just going through the application, again for the public, and just explain it again, because we know about it, but just explain it, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. I'm Rob Tupont, the architect of the project, and I'm representing Al Katoya, who's here, he's a property owner, has no other credentials. Yes, I was here, I was here last month. This project is located in the RC 5 district. It's a little bit over half an acre, it's a .68 eight-acre parcel, and the original house was built in 1964. The scope of work is an addition, actually, to the house. Al will be retiring this year, and he wants to put on a one-story addition, right here, to the house, on the north side. Basically, it comprises of a, a small expansion of the house itself. The house itself is a little over 1,000 square feet. We're adding about 290 square foot to make it a little bit more commodious inside, and the primary square footage is an attached two-car garage, which he sort of needs. We're also putting a front porch, a little cover area in front of the house for improved entrance as well. Despite the fact that it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, most of the zoning is actually applied with. The only thing that we're asking of an area variance for is coverage. Current coverage between the house and the two accessory buildings that are on it now, controlled, legal, by the way, is, stands at about 6.9%, lot coverage in the zone is 7%. And with the expansion that we're proposing on the house, it would bump us up to 10.4%. So we're asking for a 3.4%, uh, yeah, okay, all these numbers. Yeah, modest variance, 3.4% over lot coverage. It's just a one-story addition, scales in keeping with the existing house, siding is the same, there is a rendering, it shows the existing house with the addition on it, so we match, there we go. It's a pretty good match, and although there's nobody here from the public, I do have a couple of letters of support from neighbors.
That'd be great, and if you could just submit them, and we'll make them part of the public hearing.
Can I read them?
You can read them.
Oh, good. As long as they're not too long. No, no, they're very short, okay. So the first one is from one of Al's neighbors, Theodore Braggins, he lives at 8 Ballenbecker, and he writes, Dear zoning administrator, please consider this a letter in support of zoning variance request for Al Katoya, 12 Ballenbecker Road. I have no objections to the proposed plan for an attached two-car garage, and I believe it would be a nice addition to the house, to the property, excuse me. Sincerely, Theodore Braggins. And the second one is from the neighbor who would actually, would be most affected by the property, by the proposal, and that's Griffin Dunn. He owns all the property that basically surrounds Al's. I met with Griffin about a month ago, before the last meeting. I walked him through it, I showed him everything, and he had no objection, so I asked him to send a letter as well, and it's brief. His, it was an email to me, he says, Dear Robert, I know you're my neighbor, Al Katoya, have a public hearing this Wednesday, 17th, so if it's in any way helpful, please let the board know that his plans for the addition have my full support, and I'm happy to grant him an easement in my property on Ballenbecker Road. Sincerely, Griffin Dunn. The access into this property actually goes through a 50-foot easement through Griffin's property, so.
We've actually done this work, but these guys may not have that.
It's, it's.
I know, not property.
Yeah. We saved the footprint two days ago, too.
Right. Would you be, would Saturday, we like to call these things together, would the 11th be okay?
It'd be fine.
Okay, we'll try to set that up, won't be long, just get a label in it, and see where it's safe at and all that kind of stuff. Questions, concerns?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's Saturday, May 11th?
May 11th, yeah. Just because the meeting is on the 11th, so we'll do the 11th. So the caravan and sort of different properties. All right, great. I have a hearing, and there's nobody from the public who's concerned about this application. It's here for the application.
Do I just make the point?
Thank you, public.
I'm gonna make a motion right away.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anybody else. So I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And what that means is that we have 62 days until today to give you a resolution. We do not take 62 days. We have the resolution ready by the next meeting typically. So you should have the resolution by the 15th. In the meantime, we'll do, we'll come out and visit you in a convenient time just to get the label in and see where it's stayed down.
Gretchen, do you arrange that as far as the time on the 11th?
Yeah, I'll send an email.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, please make that part of the record. Thank you.
And so Scott, so planning board had provided a referral response.
That's right, and I wanted the action to address that.
And so there were two comments that the planning board had raised as possible concerns, but I, I'll tell you that they, in my opinion, they've been addressed by the applicant, and I'll go through them. But one was just a comment that per the zoning law, you can have three roofed accessory structures, so just note that this will be the third accessory structure. So if they have any more, they'll need to get a permit.
And the other one was that they thought that garage...
Yeah, there was a question, I think Catherine had raised this too. They had a question if the addition would be closer to the fronting road. And that was addressed at the last meeting, that the porch, or the porch you currently have, is it closer to the fronting road? So no additional variance needed for that. And then they also had a question if the addition of the garage would, so one of the regulations for accessory structures said that the accessory structure cannot exceed the footage of the principal dwelling or over 1,500, which that was more restrictive. And I looked into the plans that were provided. So the accessory structures altogether are about, I counted about 1278, 1,0278 square feet. The principal dwelling is 1,396, 396. So anyway, there's, they're within compliance for that as well, so.
All righty.
Oh, and I just want to, there was a comment made from you, Scott, questioning if you, if you're keeping the garage structure, but you're not really going to use your garage. I did check because I thought there was something about you could only have one garage on there. I'd asked if you could change the plans a little bit. I didn't see any changes. But anyway, you can only have one detached garage. So anyway, you're fine, but...
It's gonna be a wood shop, so.
Yeah, I remember you said it was gonna be a wood shop. So if you want to change it to just address it on the plans and, you know, convert it to a wood shop, but you don't have to. You're just going with the noise.
Okay, great. Good. And you don't have to be here on the 15th. If you want to, you can come out, but you don't have to.
Will we be first on the agenda?
No. You'll be right at the end.
We'll take it back.
And does the board, for considering the resolutions, do you have any additional thoughts? Would you want to provide your directions?
I would say in favor. That's my, but I don't know. I haven't been out to see it yet, so. My, my, from what I see, that's me, but I'm only on the prop.
It seems reasonable. Without seeing it, yeah.
Plus, I also know that the property, the Dunn property and the surrounding area out there and that kind of stuff, too, so.
Yeah, this is, just by the way, what, I'm not trying to put any more number on the spot. It's just, it's, so that I have direction as to have a draft of resolution for your consideration. That's the only reason. So any help you have or directions, just let me know. And, you know, it's like, feel free to email me with any additional comments.
Thank you.
Oh, sounds good. You've been out there a long time, haven't you?
A long time for Mr. Dunn. I forget what it was. I think it was, he had a large barn. He was converting, doing something or other. And it was a while back, but it's a nice property up there.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Very rural. They're all the way in the back.
You can't even see Al's house unless you go all the way down, into the end, so it's pretty...
Plus, the neighbors are four in the neighborhood.
It's a neighborly road?
A lot of straight views. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Good night.
Okay, next is Thomas Babinski. Hello. So if you know what to do, basically just, is there anybody here for the Babinski matter? Okay, so even though there's nobody here, so I'll go through the process of explaining what you want to do. And you're on TV, so you can just kind of direct yourself between the two.
All right, sounds good. Thanks again. So yeah, my name is Tom. I'm the homeowner at 54 Cedar Heights Road. And the project here is to install a deer fence around an apple-shaped pear tree orchard. And the variance that we're requesting is a height variance on the fence. We want to put in a six-foot-tall fence, and since the fence is within 50 feet of Cedar Heights Road, the maximal height would be four feet, so we're looking for a two-foot variance. Yeah, so that's the approximate location of the fence. The apple trees are as they're already in, and as per what we discussed last week, there's a temporary fence that Brian, Brian will keep. That's around the trees. Yeah, and...
And you provided it, I'll get to it.
Yeah, yeah. So this was a rendering that my wife put together, actually. Hopefully that's kind of shows what we're looking to do. Cedar posts and galvanized fix-down fencing. So again, nothing, not really a big old barrier you can see through as depicted there. The only things you don't see there are the trees.
And you're not going for an eight-foot, an eight-foot fence because it would even be more...
There would be this public hearing times, too.
Yeah.
I counted about five or six different meetings, a bunch of additional costs, a bunch of additional time. And it's just seemed like a lot, so that's, that's why we're only going for...
I just hope it's effective.
We hope that's six feet. So far, so good. Go with the deer?
So far, so good, yeah. But there's no leaves on the trees yet, so we'll see.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the rendering. That's great. Okay, should we address the planning boards?
Yeah, sure. So the planning board did provide a referral back. Didn't really have too much comments. They had two suggestions to consider. One being that, so this, they were basing it off the representative one that you had provided. So they had asked that the gate be in the back towards the house that's closed on the road, which you've already done, and you had already addressed that, I think, the last. And they had wondered if the gate could be more matching the post color as opposed to being black.
It probably could. I think that my, my builder probably has a default set of gates. And if it looks bad, I was planning to kind of rebuild that anyway. But I think right now, since we're already late for the trees, my, my interest is to get this into the ground as fast as possible. And also taking a step back, I thought that by not requesting an eight-foot variance, then I would be taking the planning board out of the...
So what the planning board is doing, we're just providing an advisory opinion. So it's not an additional from the planning boards, but we, the ZPA will refer all area variance to them. So the planning board just provides an advisory opinion and suggestions, if they have any, for the ZPA to consider.
And we just, since they were kind enough to give us a lot of guidance, we just addressed it. It's not a requirement. It's tough and bad and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
I have a couple of questions just left. I'm sorry, were you after I didn't understand?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much a simple...
I was just wondering why the fence was in the front and then you changed it. Why was it there? What was it?
The, the, the location in general...
Not the fence, the gate.
The gate, the gate was always going to be in the back.
Okay, so.
Yeah, and I think originally when I started the process before knowing the extent of it, we did have the pre-conference with the, with the planning board. And I think they brought up to the point that the fence, that the gate location wasn't marked. But it's...
It's always going to be there. And the other thing is, I, I really, I really don't think the, the color of the fence has anything to do with what he's looking for. I find that just, I don't, I don't think the planning board should even ask people what color the fence should be.
Well, they can, they can pick if they want.
It's, it's up to them. It's a product, and this will be addressed, but we don't have to listen to...
Yeah, and planning board typically does, that's always in there. They're, that's kind of in their basket usually to consider the aesthetic of things when they come in. So again, it was just a suggestion that they provided, and I think it was just, they were also basing it off of the, of a design which probably looked a little bit more, you know, facing a little bit more...
And, you know, my client was always to see how that looked. I think the builder has a set of, a supplier, and they, they kind of, if I request anything custom right now, it's gonna, it's gonna set you back even further. Building a door out of cedar is something I can do myself. And if it, if it doesn't look good, I'll be the first person to fix it just for my own, my own sake. But actually, you know, I actually don't think it'll look bad with black and cedar. I think it's a decent combo. It's not a, it's not a, you know, a metal chain with fence or anything like that. It's, I think it's not pretty well.
I disagree. All right, and Richard, this is yours, I think, anyway.
How about you, man?
This is your, your contact person?
Yes, Scott.
All right, any questions, concerns? Okay, very well done. I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and as you hear before, what that means is we have 62 days to render a resolution. Although, we do it typically by the next meeting, which will be the 15th. You do not have to be here, but if you have nothing better to do on a Wednesday evening, you can sit here and listen to the resolution being read right now. I think it'll also be, you know, we've started a process where...
Yeah, so now the post-resolutions online, probably Monday, Tuesday? So draft resolutions are available for you to take a look at. And then you have copies, hard copies up there to print. Just, it'll just help more with transparency and just so people are aware of what the board's considering.
And in this case, is there going to be a site visit?
Uh, yes, we'll get out, we'll probably get a drive-by or if things are already kind of set up. Let me ask you, this is the temporary? That's stay at the same exact location as the permanent?
It is exactly the location, and it's slightly smaller. And there are actual stakes where the, the real corners are going to go.
We'll probably just drive by because it looks like we could probably just drive by.
Okay.
Not for us, you.
Yeah, and you'll see that this fence will look a lot better than the one that's there.
So yes, we do go out, we do, on drive-bys. We don't...
So this one, you don't need us to even really...
I don't think so. I mean, just looking at it from the picture, there's a road right there. I think we can...
Yeah, I think I have a Google, just like a Google Earth, so I think it's going to be pretty...
Yeah, that was the old, that, that, those were the trees that didn't survive because they didn't have their fence. So there isn't any such trees.
Yeah, this is from 2023, but...
So no, we, I don't, we don't need to, we don't need to drive by.
Are the trees in the ground?
They are in the ground.
Oh.
Yeah, great. I didn't have to say, the nursery ships them at the right time to plant them. And so you kind of just have to wait.
Good, I hope that all works out with you. Good orchard there.
Yeah. I already told Gretchen and Brian, if they want to get apples, then I'll bring some over.
Less than a $25 mountain, right?
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And so any additional, the planning board, any additional thoughts?
And it's the, and it's the only place you can have. I mean, if you look at the topography with all the, the trees and everything else, you can only be there. It's fine.
So we're driving past, not far away.
On 511, we're trying to say.
Yeah, cool. You know, your parabola is just...
Yeah, as we did the last time.
Good, Tom, right there. I'm Sam.
Hi, Sam.
Who's me?
I'm your neighbor.
Good, good. I seen your last project over there.
Yeah.
Looks like our neighbor. I don't care. I don't even... Is your property...
Send you a letter. Yes, you do, yeah.
Nice meeting you.
All right. So next, I understand that the planning board has made a secret determination on wireless edge, and that's the next public hearing. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Robert Godioso. On behalf of the applicants, Wireless Edge and Barson Wireless, I have Mr. John Arthur, President of Wireless Edge. So thank you for the time tonight. I know this is a continued public hearing, but the planning board did in fact grant the negative declaration, which I believe is what we've been waiting for. They found there was no significant adverse environmental impacts. We are seeking the height variance for the proposed tower at the location that we've been discussing, which was originally, as you may recall, the alternative that was recommended by their planning board in the documentation sent to you. I think there was also some testimony at the prior hearings and from the fire department about the need for the facility and the support of the facility. So with that, would you have to answer any questions that the board have? Thank you. I don't have any questions, but I'll leave it to the rest again here if you have any questions. I know, I believe you sent in some photographs, which was very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, did you want to just go?
Yeah, well, we'll go through that. We'll go through the...
So we will go through the, these are just the places that they would be visible?
Because you put, you put a lot of work into it, and I think it's important for the public, you know, this is on TV to see.
So I'll go through them, and Robert, you want to confirm it? Just, this is from the crane test. So what they do is they have the balloon, they have the crane test at the height, the balloon test, and then if it's visible in any places here, you'll see how the corners is visible seasonally. And then wherever it's visible, they put a rendering as to what the proposal plan, uh, plan would look like. These include the most recent ones, which would include the four additional antennas.
Yeah, additional collocators. We're only proposing a variety at this time, but the code requires, I think with planning, requires that we build a colocation to avoid additional towers in the area. So what we did is we showed on the, on the rendering, particularly as the next shot, the additional barriers. So you can see that. That's the poor court worst-case scenario. No light on the tower. We did confirm that. We submitted an FAA report.
I'm surprised you can see it from Port Village. I'm surprised you can even see it from...
No one's going to notice that the drive-in drive-in is so far back.
So distant.
It is, it's, like you said, the worst-case scenario.
And by the way, these are, these were just the ones where it's going to be visible. They, they have a, there's a full visual analysis report that has been provided, and you'll see that most of them, of the locations aren't visible. These are just the ones that are, so.
Yeah, we literally sorted out to take those photos in most places. Okay, anybody here for this other than, okay?
Can we just move back there?
All right. All right, then I'll make a, a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we will have a resolution.
Yes, we have a draft resolution following the planning board's secret determination of the zoning board can act. Mr. Godioso reached out to me to ask if there was a possibility that we could have a resolution prepared. I confirmed it with Scott. It says this has been a continued public, uh, public hearing, and, you know, the board has kind of expressed their direction and deliberations. I have one draft, so.
And we appreciate that, Chris. Thank you.
Or worse.
So who is the...
I guess that is an addition on there, that all the board members get priority. So Scott, do you want to...
Was I the one? I guess I was the one.
Do you want to just, I think that's the end of the...
It is, but we must go right into it.
Yeah, well, you want to just ask if anyone's here for Williams? Anyone's here for Williams? So we'll, we'll just go back and we'll make a formal motion for Williams to continue.
Oh, I think, that's right, I'm beginning.
Yeah, so, but we'll, we'll, since they have, we're right up here.
Well, you know what, would you just make a quick, you know...
Do you want to do a quick...
Yeah, I'll make a quick motion that we open the continued public hearing of Williams. Yeah, I'll make a quick motion that we open the continued public hearing with Williams. And as I understand, do I have a second? So, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and as I understand, so that's a lot of the...
Measurements.
Measurements, and I'm not quite sure what we're going to do with this, so I guess we'll continue one.
Yeah, I'll look into if there's like a real, like a time limit to when an application is just declared to be...
I don't know how many months, probably sneaking up on a year even.
But I think the last one was September. Yeah, I'll look into, if I could provide any guidance for the board. At this point, I would suggest we just continue it until we can provide a little bit more guidance to the board and to Mr. Williams, give him one less shot to kind of come in.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, then, I guess I make a motion to continue the public hearing until 5:15. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and maybe you'll have a little...
Guidance by then, or...
Yeah, I'll look into that.
It's not a burning issue, but...
Well, it's a, it's a good question. We've had this on a few cases.
A couple times, yeah. All right, so now we're into whole business, and for instance, at first, Bud, since we had Fire percentage here first, you know, here, I'll, I'll read the resolution that has been drafted. And the resolution has already been, is, is it on the website?
Yeah, so it was posted on Monday. Draft resolution was posted on Monday, and there's copies. I just provided some updates for the board based on the planning board's secret determination. I filled in a few dates, and I've just made a few, so it's... So this is just, I'll just take you through quickly the red line, just to show, it'll show you just what's different from what was posted. So the first change, I, I, when I looked through in drafting the resolution, I didn't see a determination letter. So I had thought, I don't remember how this kind of came about. It started at the planning board, and they asked for consideration of a different site at Rudy's, and then it was from the board. So I thought it was kind of like a planning board referral, but Gretchen provided me with a determination letter. So this just clarifies that applicants filed the application on September 21st. The determination was dated December 20th, so it is timely. And it was done through the determination letter. Paragraph six just says that on April 15th, the planning board concluded a secret review, finding that the proposed communication tower will not result in a moderate to significant impact on the community, and issued a negative declaration. Therefore, there's no additional environmental studies or assessments required. And this, the only thing I changed here was just putting in the dates, which Gretchen provided to me. So planning board, town planning board referral was done on January 22nd. WAC was done on January 22nd, and that's kind of it. And then this just adds that Duchess County Planning Board responded that it's a matter of little concern and had no additional comments. WAC hasn't provided a response, but 30 days have elapsed, so we don't need to wait for them. And then I just have here, left with space under public hearing, there then, there's no public hearings comments, so I'll just add that there weren't any, and public hearing is closed. And then the only, only change, I had a section about the shot clock, which was just the time period. I, I thought that shot clock had been extended for Rudy's, but we're actually within the 150 days, so no shot clock had been done, so that's all I just mentioned.
So do you want me to read?
Yes, do you want to start?
I'm going to start at the now, therefore, because it's been on, it's been published, basically, in draft form, so. All righty. Now, therefore, be resolved based upon all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the proposed communication tower towards the feet will remedy existing gaps in coverage of primebeck. The slim, monopole design painted brown presents minimal intrusion on the community while providing a benefit for increased coverage and capacity in the area. The communication tower is set back from the road and surrounded by existing vegetation and trees. No FAA light is required for the communication tower, further producing potential visibility impacts. And section two, the granting of this variance is expressly contingent upon the following. There are any conditions...
If, I just left it open in case the ZBA had any conditions.
Yeah, none.
None, okay.
The only, the only other thing I might, you know, it's just, the, the, the other thing in section one is it's a safety issue too. And we, we have the fire department, and you can't call 911, you may throw that in there, just saying that this is a matter of public concern and safety, happiness.
Sure, I have that also in the discussion at the top.
Okay, three, the granting of this variance shall also expressly, shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Primebeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application, in full compliance with Article 14, fee reimbursement of the ten of Primebeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such things are paid and pulled by the applicant. The granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. The proposed structure must be constructed in conformity with the application and plan submitted, subject to any additional requirements and conditions from the planning board. And then five, the area of area shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. All right, any comments or concerns?
Agreed, to be able to approve this?
Yes, it is. So with that, I make a motion that we grant the resolution, or grant the application and approve the resolution as read.
So we'll take our section two, then we'll add the little statement about this.
Subject to the, yeah, the changes we just mentioned. So, do I have a second? Or I take it back? Roll call.
No, you need a second.
Oh, second, right, okay, second.
Go ahead.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
All right, Scott?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming tonight, thank you.
Four bars for everyone.
I'm going to hold you to that. If I don't get four bars, I'll be, I'll be visiting you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So we all ready for it?
Yep.
I think I have that one too, it's private call card.
So this one also was, I have drafted it, circulated to the board. It's been posted on the website, and I don't think, and there's copies here for anyone who wants it. And I don't believe, oh, I just made one little change where I just provided that WAC hasn't provided a response. 30 days have elapsed, so the ZBA is able to act about that. Okay?
Shall we?
Shall we?
All right. Now, therefore, be resolved based upon all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZBA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health and safety of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The sign is replacing an existing sign. The sign will be the same size as what currently exists and in the same location. The tax is also not changing or evading from what is currently on the sign. Section two, the granting of this variance is expressly contingent upon the fully signed being constructed in conformity with the application and plan submitted. Section three, the granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Primebeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application, in full compliance with Article 14, fee reimbursement of the ten of Primebeck zoning law. The variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid and pulled by the applicant. Section four, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. And section five, the area of area shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution. So I drove by, replacing the sign that is actually, it is in disrepair, for the most pressing out there. The sign that's out there, it's not that big, you know, in my opinion. And this is just going to be the same size, so it seems appropriate to me. I wouldn't want to have a sign any smaller, you know, with traffic totally blocking. You know, it has to be certain size so you can see it, and get through, so. I, I forget, was it, is it a little higher than it was, or not? That's exactly the same, it's exactly the same.
Yeah, I think the shape's a little different.
The shape, I know the shape is...
Yeah, because it's an absolute square.
I think by the way that they calculate the height is, it ends up being the same.
Yeah. The only thing that has nothing to do really with the application is they got to do a little trimming.
Right. You can't see it going south, going north.
That's exactly right.
You, you, going north, it's perfect.
Yep.
Going south, you've got that wall on the trip, so they don't have, that's why I asked it, because it's going to be a little...
No, no, they got to do a little trimming, because I came south, and I don't, because, yeah. No, anyway. Any other comments, concerns, questions?
No.
Okay, I will make a motion at this time that we grant the application and adopt the resolution as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Gretchen?
Scott?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Brian?
All right, and do we have anything else, or does that conclude our festivities for this evening?
We're good. You've been on long.
Yeah, it only took 21 years. Okay, Gretchen? You're still on, so.
Yeah, right.
All right, so, all right. Anybody have anything? Motion to adjourn.
Circle second.
All right. Proved. Bye. See you next month.
Thank you.
Steve? Awesome.